Okay, thank you. So it looks like now we have the Toric, Councilor Doyle is the only one that's not got her camera. Other she has, okay. So it's like we got a full board here. Neil, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So I would like to open the special regular session of the CETA board with roll call, please.
Board member Van Gordon.
Here.
Board member Weber.
Here.
Board member Mo.
Here.
Vice Chair Rodley.
Here.
Board member Blackwell.
Here.
Board member Doyle.
Here.
Chair Pictionary.
Here and thank you.
And board member Levall.
Here.
Okay, so we can go ahead and open up discussion and is that going to be? Who do you want to start this off with Neil or Mary Bridget?
The first item is business from the board.
We, is that an area that I bring in or someone brings in Mary Bridget?
That's an opportunity for board members to bring forward matters for discussion before you get to the agenda item.
Oh, okay.
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion, Chair.
Okay.
I move to authorize the city attorney to ask the Oregon Government Ethics Commission to determine whether there were any public official ethics violations under O R S Chapter 244 related to the Masaka Properties LLC request to CETA for downtown Springfield project funding.
I have a motion. I hear a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Corey Rodley and seconded by Counselor Weber, should say Counselor Rodley as well. All those in favor signify by aye. Let's do a roll call. I'll do a roll call now.
Board member Van Gordon.
Yes.
Board member Weber.
Yes.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rodley.
Yes.
Board member Blackwell.
Yes.
Board member Doyle.
Yes.
Chair Pictionary.
Yes.
And board member Levall.
First I've heard, I think ethically I might have to recuse myself from this discussion.
I think that's correct and it looks like the attorney agrees. So with those, with that vote is unanimous, yeah. We're directing the city attorney to move forward with that letter. Is there any other items for this meeting?
The city attorney has a direction. No further questions or anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other items for this meeting now?
Yeah, the next item is under old business and that's item number one Glenwood update. Ally Camp is here for this item.
Thank you. I'm just going to kick it off, but really today, the bulk of the content is going to be carried by professionals from our master planning team. The Ral, Ral Broca Architects and Walker Macy team are currently on task three of their work plan for the Glenwood master plan area. This is called concept development. At this stage, the project is starting to conceptualize options for a physical framework for this thirty acre, roughly thirty acre piece of land. This is anything from streets and to a program for how the land can be used. The master planning team has been gathering information for the past few months from adjacent landowners and public agency partners to piece together all this information to bring us to the point we're at today. Just a reminder that master planning is the land use process needed to establish what can be referred to as horizontal development. It will realize things like the phasing of development over time, provision of public facilities and services, determination of specific land uses and densities, identification of potential impacts for proposed developments, and assurance of predictability for this long-term development potential that we've been moving forward for a couple of years. We've hired a great team of people to help us with this. The Ral Broca team is here today, Lori Nelson and John Ral, and then the Walker Macy representative, Samia is here. I just want to remind us too that we have developers on board. Jill from Ethan and Company and Mark from DeChase Mixes that were brought on in spring of 2020. Think we're at a really good position knowing that we have our professional staff working together at this very important point in time to piece together all this information to set us up for success in the future. So with that, I think I'll hand it over to the.
Sorry, Ally, I just want to let the board know Nancy Newton is on the meeting. She is having some technical difficulties, so we're going to add her by her phone. So when you see her phone number on the screen, that's her. So she'll be on the panel this shortly. So sorry about that. Just wanted to give an update.
No problem. Thanks. I'm going to hand it over to Lori, John and Samia for the rest of our time today.
Thanks, Sally. Appreciate that. Good evening and we're happy to be here tonight. We're going to show you a short presentation. Feel free to jump in with any questions at any point in time. And I will start sharing. Nope, except sharing screen is disabled.
Bear with me and we will work on fixing that.
Okay.
Could we go over who the players are again? I know we keep adding to the Glenwood team and right, so I'm not sure that I know could know everybody, even though I know your a- agency names.
Yeah, so the, the team has grown. Ral Broca Architects, John Ral is from Ral Broca, Lori is also from Ral Broca. Samia Kenny is with the Walker Macy team, who are the parks planners for the master planning process. And then back in twenty twenty, and they have a whole team of sub consultants working on them to kind of collate this information and bring it together for a concept for you today. And then our two folks that we brought on back in April of 2022, Jill Sherman and Mark Mixes, those are the master developers that will be bringing the CETA and the city-owned portions of land to vertical development in the future.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thanks, Ally. Okay. Wanted to just give you a quick update on the schedule. We are in the earlier phases of this project. We have done a fair amount of background checking and looking at all the existing documents and finding information that has been done in the past, which is a fair amount. We are just in the early stages of concept planning. And you can see from our schedule here that we will go quite a ways out from where we are today. So concept is a really early design phase. That means we have quite a bit more to go. What you see here tonight is not the finished product and that we will continue to circle back on some of these ideas and bring them back to you in the future. So tonight we're going to share five different ideas or thoughts on where we're going with this, the block structure connecting to the river, streets, block density, riverfront park, and phasing or the development over time. And with that, I'm going to pass this off to John really quickly.
Thanks, Lori. Yeah, so in the, in the analysis phase, we were really understanding the refinement plan and what was essential to that, what was the backbone of it and where the real opportunities were. And that's what we were asked to do. And this, this is just a kind of summary of of what we found, very simple diagram. You know, with the connections, street connections to roundabouts and to the frontage road. And then the necessity for east-west local streets, one and then a riverfront street. And of course, the continuous riverfront path and potential for a park in green space and then in the refinement plan, the connection to the river is very important. So part of our analysis in Lori will talk more about this was looking at, well, what should the block structure be to better support development? And we've got some proposals around more developable blocks. And what can we do to make the connection to the river really strong and engaging and active? So let's go to the next slide. And we've looked at, you know, in our, our concept design work, we've looked at multiple options and just wanted to show you where we've kind of landed in terms of an overall framework and so the, the diagram that we're proposing here looks a lot like, you know, the kind of framework that came out of our analysis with a few special elements. So we've got six blocks and Lori will talk about the block size and how that supports development, a kind of graceful arc, exactly where the riverfront street is. We're still working on that relation to the park. North-south streets and Samia will talk more about the character of those streets and sections. And then this middle element, which we're calling a promenade street, really is replacing the park blocks, which we've in our analysis phase presented some ideas about how we could shift those to be more active and result in better development sites. And then you'll see in red, this outline of some of the existing buildings that we obviously some that are active and great and some that we believe have strong potential, like the Skilern building at the south. I don't know if you can see my arrow right off of the frontage road. So let's go to the next diagram. And this is just one of the sketches that we produce that kind of gets at the character. Well, what could that middle, we're seeing the middle street, north-south being the, the kind of visual connection and people connection to the river. Obviously, there's good access from the roundabouts as well.
But we kind of. Pardon me, I don't know if you could see the handset when they go up because you have your presentation up, but count, Board Chair Pictionary has to send it.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Thank you.
No, it's okay. So I just didn't know. I think actually as you move along, there's developed, there's questions that may develop by the board members that instead of trying to rely on memory, like some of those old folks here have a hard time on that. So no, the it looks like you're, to me, you're sort of reinventing the wheel that we spent months and months and months on for the Glenwood plan, the master plan in Glenwood. And I'm hoping that you didn't spend any extra time or spend any extra monies for your services, et cetera, for things that, that have already been discussed. And hopefully you saw some things in the master plan that may still be valid, but if not, then I'm glad that you're doing it this way. So I'm not so confident that the original master plan for Glenwood was really all that fantastic. So I'm just, I guess reiterating or assure, probably providing the assurance that you did look at that and that all those things were considered.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, if, if I can see the, they were find the analysis phases really, and we continue to refer back to the refinement plan because it's our reference point. That work was there's really great work there. What we're trying to do is, is bring more definition to it and also where we think the areas of greatest opportunity are. So really to strengthen that and translate from a refinement plan to a master plan, if that makes sense.
No, that's good. We have, but you know, we have Lama Lane folks here that are listening on this and part of their design team for their stuff, so to speak. So the information that you're sharing here is being heard by them, which I think is very important to, to bring in all of the players.
Definitely.
Steve, you had a question? Go ahead.
I do, and I'm glad he referred to the refinement plan. The original refinement plan was in the middle nineteen eighties. It's very similar to what we're talking about now. So I guess we had a good idea then. It just taking this, this long to get to it. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Sean, go ahead.
I know we're talking about the difference between the refinement plan and the master plan. And so maybe a little bit of context about what role each of them plays, right? Because I feel like, you know, we're walking a ton of miles to the, to the, to the end product here and I'm, you know, and I'm, that would be maybe a little bit helpful.
Would you like?
Go ahead. John or Lori, I'm happy to jump in with this.
Yeah, who, which one of you will address that last?
Yeah, so the refinement plan is our foundational land use document. That document was adopted in 2014 and that really sets the policies for what we're trying to achieve for the vision of this area. A master plan is a regulatory land use document that allows us to define where streets go, define how land can be built upon. It really allows us, allows us to transfer those policies and those visions into something that's actionable and meets our land use code. So that's, that's kind of the difference between these two tools. They have to work together. And the refinement plan is kind of the foundation for what this team is building on top of.
So sorry for the follow-up, but based on that too, is that still, when you say they have to work together, are any of those, it's my impression when I voted yes on some of those years ago, that it doesn't, it, they were semi-set in stone, but still at some point can be tweaked and modified. So that is still present and John's not up against a wall on any of it.
Right. There are mechanisms within the refinement plan for how to adjust it over time.
Okay, thank you.
Shall I continue?
Yeah, go ahead, John. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, great questions. So this is more of a, you know, an idea sketch about, well, what could that middle connection from the frontage road be right through the middle of the master plan site? It would be a connection from Frank, Franklin to the river. And we're thinking of that as a, as a street that would be very pedestrian oriented, would have a a path that really connects from Franklin to the river. We are looking at existing buildings as a resource. There's some, they're not necessarily historic, but they've got a lot of character. The Skilern building. One that we've learned is called the Hanger Building and, and maybe less potential than one on the, the east roundabout that has the track sports in it, but all three of them are existing buildings that we see having potential to create a place. And we've got a couple of images on the right, one from McMinnville lower down, which has a sort of conveys some of the history of that place and has a an attractive place-making quality to it. And then and so we see these as things and Lori will talk more about phasing as things that could happen early and create a sense of identity and activity on Franklin. So you don't have to wait years for that to happen. And then connecting with a generous path, the one from the wa- south waterfront, if you've been there in Portland. Not exactly the same. We're talking about a wide path next to a street, but that that would have a really wonderful connection that would be, it's just a three-minute walk from Franklin to the river. So and then you arrive at the center of of park space and along that path, along that middle street, we would emphasize orienting buildings to front that street. So we're creating activity. So we have an active place. People want to be there. We've got a, we've got a there on Franklin and you have that destination of the river. Next.
All right, this just elaborates a little bit more on where some of the existing property lines are. The private property owners, in addition to CETA and the city of Springfield and Homes for Good. So just a little bit more hardline drawing. Keep in mind that where, where you see these streets right now may or may not be the final location, but they're starting to give us a sense of how much developable area do we have? And I think what we feel one of our main tasks is for this project is to create opportunities for development. We know that this project has been in the queue here for quite a long time, progressing at its own pace and that we want to make sure that the end result of where streets and the shape of the blocks are really meet the needs of developers and those who actually will make some of these projects happen. We're working with Mark and Jill, as was mentioned earlier, developers. These are some of the projects that they have done, the two on the left. And then the one on the right, you might recognize is Amazon Corner, which we did. And we're just using these projects as examples of what might it look like in this area in the future? And we're assuming that the buildings will be anywhere from, you know, three, maybe six stories, but kind of in that range and that they will probably be on a scale, something like this. And these are just taking those examples and putting them on the site plan so that we kind of see, well, how does that fit that block size? And just as an example over here, Amazon Corner, the buildings with a corner oriented towards our promenade street. You can see this little blue dashed line. That's how that particular project would fit on this site. So that's helping us see how much development can we get on that block? And is that block big enough to actually accommodate the type of development that we're talking about? And not too small or not too big. So we're looking for just the right size for that. We'll jump now to streets and give you a little bit of information about the street types that we're thinking about. Samia?
You may get to this. I have a question. I think about as you're putting those buildings down, like what's the sort of relative density that those that those are go, that they're going into? And you may, you may get to this now that I look at your. So I'm willing to delay that question.
It's a very good question. And just as a, just rule of thumb, I think the minimum is fifty dwelling units per acre. And that's based on the refinement plan as it stands now. You could probably get more than that. We feel like that's not hard to achieve. So we will show you a couple of other developments there that show that as we move forward. Thank you.
Right. I'm Samia Kenny with Walker Macy. I'm an urban designer supporting the Ral Broca team on this plan. And I'll give a brief overview of where the streets framework and the open space framework is heading as part of this master plan. So the refinement plan, touching back to that, it proposed a very walkable and connected grid of streets with a strong green connection from Franklin Boulevard to the river. And those are all really good ideas that we've proposed to refine a little bit. And as Lori mentioned, creating developable block sizes, making walkability happen, providing for a good size of riverfront park. Those are all informing this block structure that we're creating through a framework of streets. The general principle for street design here are that they're all great streets. They're all green and public streets with a focus on safety and accessibility. But they should also be serving multiple functions, including just giving access to all this new development as well as the riverfront park and importantly, integrating stormwater management infrastructure. So I'm going to start by talking about the promenade street, which is noted in the darkest green. And that's our, that's our nod back to the refinement plan. How are we creating this strong green connection from Franklin Boulevard to the river? And the idea here is that this street should really function as a public space. There was an idea of these park blocks in the refinement plan. We think that that intent of creating spillout space that supports development, creating walkability and that green connection can be achieved through a really generous promenade of twelve feet where folks can walk side by side or be pushing strollers or even have kids on their trikes. So that green connection moving up the east side of the street would be serving that function. It's also serving as that clear connection to the riverfront park. And there's an idea that if we're developing some activity along Franklin with those existing buildings and doing something public facing and active on Franklin, there is a public face component there that then is linked by the promenade street toward the riverfront park at the north. If you move to the next slide, the north-south streets, which would connect into the development area from the two existing roundabouts on either side of the promenade street are generally just walkable streets that we're proposing has a narrow roadway with on-street parking opportunities as well as room to integrate plenty of green infrastructure for stormwater and healthy trees. Move to the next slide. The central east-west connecting street, which is between Franklin Boulevard and the riverfront street we're proposing could actually offer an opportunity for angle in parking, which would then take some of the pressure off of the surface parking for the development blocks and make them more efficient. It also creates nice opportunities for generous bump outs or swales that could deal with stormwater. Move to the next. And then finally, the riverfront street is a really important street for this area. As John mentioned, the alignment, the exact alignment of that street will actually determine the size of the riverfront park and the size of the block. So we're still looking at options for where that street might run. But the general principle is that it's integrated with the design of the adjacent riverfront park, which we'll get into a little bit later. It's a slow street through the district with the potential to actually be closed off for festivals or events similar to the First Avenue example in Corvallis downtown. We also think it should include pockets of parking that would support the park as well as commercial uses. And I think I'll hand back to Lori this piece.
Thanks, Samia. We'll talk very briefly about block density and we've included this slide. This is actually using some software that we like to use. It's kind of a new software, so we haven't used a lot, but it the buildings won't actually look like this. The software is a little clunky, but the idea is like if we start to locate buildings on blocks, we're kind of testing how much surface parking would have to be there. We're not convinced that the development type that will happen there will have a lot of structured parking as an underground parking. So if we're surface parking, we need to kind of balance the building size and the surface parking. So this was just an idea to kind of look at this and say, well, how much you know, how much development can we have on this site? Just based on kind of like a puzzle, looking at it that way. And just to give you an idea of the development, this is showing eight hundred units. And we have about twenty-six acres here. And that does include the streets. So it doesn't give you exact dwelling units per acre. But it does show you that if you have eight hundred units and you're parking one-to-one, that means you'd have also eight hundred surface parking spaces as well. Just gives us a sense of like, well, what does this look like? Or how much, you know, building and parking would we have on this site? And then we're going to talk just a little bit about riverfront park.
Yes, so I'm really glad to.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Just, I'm just going to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
So the, on that model you show, is that model showing all eight hundred parking spots or is that abbreviated?
No, it's showing eight hundred parking spots. So if you saw it as a direct arrow view, you'd be able to count the eight hundred parking spots. And part of this is that we're trying to determine what is the best use for the site? What are the best opportunities? And it's a question of if we have surface parking as earlier phases and you might want to in the long run have a parking garage, for example, where might that parking garage be? And at what point kind of in the phasing of the project might that happen? And it may never happen, but we're just kind of looking at those as possibilities so that we can understand.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Also shows that if you decide to be able to somehow in a design stack parking, then that starts to immediately free up some physical space for other things. So, okay, thank you.
No, that's exactly what we're thinking and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Go ahead, Steve. Your microphone.
Oh, we can't hear you.
One more time. There you go.
Okay, I never know where to introduce new ideas when I see them. There, there is no pedestrian bike access to downtown Springfield in this plan. There's been talk in the past about a pedestrian bridge across the length of Island Park. And right now, there is, there is no safe access to downtown. What, what's going to happen there?
I think as we kind of start, we're, your, your question is very timely. We're just going to jump into what are some really quick sketches of the park here and talk a little bit about not only the riverfront path, but what happens or what potentially could happen in that riverfront.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Mo. And I, I know the, the Ped Bike Bridge is a really great idea. It's in the TSP and we're very excited about that because that really unlocks a lot of the potential of not just the development sites, but also the park will create something really great here. So I was excited to hear there's some Lama Lane folks in the, in the meeting room here. I want to preface this by saying we're planning with Ally to set up a meeting where we can actually work through some of these ideas together and start to understand what some of the program elements might be for a riverfront park in this location. But I'll give you a brief overview of our thinking so far. So first of all, just looking at the scale of what a riverfront park might be in this place. We took the Eugene Riverfront Park as in a sort of scale study example and overlaid it. So you can see that about three acres of occupiable habitable open space on the riverfront would be possible here. Similar scale and feel to the Eugene Riverfront Park that's just been completed. If we move to the next slide here, one of the challenges and opportunities of this is that the riverfront is obviously the biggest asset of the site. It's, it's going to be the place that people want to be. And it's a really beautiful and untouched piece of river. But how we develop and design that park will really depend on what types of activation, programming and use we're envisioning for this space. So what we're starting to do here is not necessarily design the park, but start to sketch through different program elements and options for sizing that could help inform how much space we want to give to that park. So here you can see three options. The smallest shows about six and a half acres. The largest shows about seven and a half acres. With the first option, we're calling community center. It's really the smallest and most linear option. With this, you could have sort of one good-sized picnic lawn that's maybe bracketed by the pizza shop and the carpenter existing wood shop building. So there could be some really nice activation to that event space. And then the rest of the park. And then the rest of the park would be sort of passive linear, um, bike and ped connections and restoration. The medium sized option gives us a little more space to play with. So you can see between the pizza shop and the existing carpenter building, there could be space for an event lawn. And potentially even a small development path for special development on that property that would be a public contributing use. There's also opportunities here to create one more sort of passive picnic lawn on the other side of the carpenter building. And finally, the largest option we think would really offer the most opportunities for programming and activation. Um, and it could also be a really good support for the amount of housing and affordable housing in particular that will be located on the site. This shows a couple of, uh, large kind of event spaces. And the potential to include, um, kind of play potentially nature play to support kids growing up in the neighborhood. I want to note that all of these would include the opportunity for river access and small watercraft launch potentially. That's something we've heard that Lammalane might be interested in exploring. So we'll just show some brief examples on the next couple of slides of what some of this could look like. So generally, all of the options, um, would include river access and riverfront paths. Um, again, this is a great location for river access and beaches because it's sort of on the, the, because of its, uh, relationship to the current. And then moving to the next slide. With that medium size, we could have something like this event lawn, which also includes kind of viewpoints and river access and maybe a special development or structure in the park. And then the next slide shows the opportunities for potentially nature play, um, and larger gathering spaces. Another important aspect of the park design is that it's an opportunity for cultural and historic interpretation. For example, of indigenous history in the area, um, as well as art and just great ways for people to connect to views on the river.
Great. That's what we have for parks.
Just a quick question, if I could, uh, is it? Oh, yeah.
It's Samia.
Samia, okay. Thank you. Sorry for. But butchering it. So was there, has there been any thought or consideration into looking at these or will there be? In regards to the ability to provide police protection in that area? And so. You know, there's a lot of things along the river. Building design, does anybody get their fingers in with has some experience in regards to, um. Police protection in these projects?
I don't know.
The ability to. And how many, you know, how many has, has there been agencies that have been contacted? Hey, if this was like dropped down on your land. How many more officers or what kind of protection? Can be, would be needed there to do it properly? And then we could, we would now then realistically have to look at the added burden to the city in regards to. What's the, 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 you know, the, the waves in the puddle, what's gonna happen?
Councilor Pishan, are you talking about design elements to help limit crime? Or are you just interested in? Maybe impacts to parks currently?
Well, we have, we have parks involved potentially who they, they may have some open spaces, right? They have park rangers, but that's typically, um, you know, they have their own thing going on as far as minor crimes. But then you have. If you look at these pictures on the left, you have some areas that I can very easily and would love to see on the river. Those areas, but they play a very, uh, very unique spot in regards to, uh. Police presence and in, in regards to minimizing crimes and, and assaults, et cetera, et cetera. So at some point, I think. And it may be something as a business plan for you all folks is to at some point pull in some, uh. Public protection folks of some sort, police agencies of some sort and say, we want your two bits worth of info. Take a look at these. And do you see anything that jumps out on you that's going to cause a particular problem or create an additional strain on your resources? Because that's gonna, that's gonna be something that's gonna be have to, and I would rather address it before it's built out than having to address it after things happen.
I can make a note and a note of that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Uh, you, you speak of police protection. I would, I always like to use the word security. So everybody feels secure living there. And there's somebody to watch over them.
Make people feel safe. That's what I mean.
Trying to use a gentler word for it. And, but, uh, I was gonna say now. Uh, you're certainly a little bit concerned about what it's gonna cost to do that. This tax, property tax revenues from this area is going to be so. Incredible. I'm pretty sure I hope it's going to pay for itself. So. We've got a plan for it and take care of it, but it may not be that big of a problem.
Oh, yeah, I, I completely agree with you, Steve, and I, and I have no doubt whatsoever that it's going to be a huge tax. Thing, but it should also be as we start budgeting and start looking at the future and that would be Neil's job. If you're looking to the future too and, and see what kind of a burden it's going to place on the entire city for, you know, regionally, so.
Okay, we're going to wrap up really quick, talking about phasing and the development over time. And you've heard us talk a little bit about some of the existing buildings on the site right now. And the skill run building, uh, on the top left there, and then the, uh, long skinny metal, metal building that we're calling the hangar building on the top right. And you can see a digital model of the skiller and building there on the bottom. And just to give you, um, a quick idea, there are a number of examples that we could use for repurposed buildings that have really generated. Uh, a lot of interest and activity. This is just one example in Portland. It's the red on Salmon Street. And again, it's sort of a industrial building that just has some history and character to it. And, um. Not only, uh, the design team, but the developers also think that there is a possibility to make these really interesting, uh, buildings. And that they could easily be the first phase of the development that happens on the site. Uh, just a couple more examples here. Uh, this one in McMinville that really shows sort of a gateway. We like this idea that you're, uh. That you see this place that you actually want to access the river from. So if you're driving down Franklin, that there is something iconic there. That kind of catches your eye so that you could say, oh, that's the place that I want to go because I know that will get me to the river. Um, and then the image on the bottom is really just, uh, showing sort of a. I wouldn't necessarily call it a festival street, but just something a little bit more. Interesting or added than just straight streets, but we do see some of these areas as multi-use. So where you have a street, it could also become. Activity area if you close off the street or events or for special. Special opportunities. So. As I noted that we feel like if you have some of these existing buildings that. And this is just one example because it might, we might find out that, you know, the first development starts to happen on a different block for this, but. If, for example, it started on this building or this site with the existing buildings. Then we actually think you could start development without actually doing any streets to start with. So you could have access from the frontage road where there's parking. And then start development on those, uh, existing buildings. And start to create interest for more development to happen, uh, on the entire site. Once that starts, we might see development happening of the streets around that block. And that would be the first part of the public infrastructure to come in. And then just following that line of thought. Top, uh, left that you might actually get the next block in for public infrastructure, getting you to the river. And then from there, it just kind of, uh, trickles out around all the other areas. So. Just showing one example, and I think that's one of the questions that, uh, we will start diving into after we get sort of the block structure set. Is what are the possibilities for, uh, shared investment in the public infrastructure? And then we're just going to leave you with this graphic that kind of shows a diagram of where we are right now. So. Again, happy to answer more questions. We're happy to have your questions during the presentation as well.
Anybody?
And, and I just want to say thank you to the master planning team. Um, as you can see. Understanding what this land can bring over time. It's a big puzzle. Um, and they've been kind of pushing and pulling and stretching and shrinking and figuring out what could work for the site. Uh, and I'm really excited with, um, the work they've done so far.
Yeah, very good. Um, and I did see that Cory raised her hand, hand. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I really appreciate this work and y'all coming to share. It's very exciting. Um, I know I've not been in this as long as some folks have been in this, so it's really exciting to start to see things take shape. Uh, one of the things I'm really appreciating by this and hope we continue to explore is. Kind of space for multiple ways for people to move. And by that is some of those pictures, I noticed that there were like multiple paths. So there's potentially. You know, paths that are for bicycles and paths that are for pedestrians, but are wide enough for people who have mobility devices and. And because I've been in some, some city spaces where those are, there, there's multiple ways. So like people could park and then there's a bike path. And then there's also pedestrian paths and it just seems to really increase the. The sort of accessibility for folks. And so it was exciting to see some of those and, and. Really thinking about the, the, the streets and the whatever, the, the. Promenade street or whatever we're calling it, having multiple ways for people to move around. And plenty of space, I think is just, it's, it's. It's designing for now in the future. So I just really appreciate that. And. Um, I'm also interested in thinking about. You know, I know you're looking at the units and, and I think that's also super exciting and, and what those look like and how do we? Build and still, you know, have views of the river and things like that. So I think, I will, I think we're on the right track and I'm really excited to see where it's going.
Thank you, Cory. And I think we'll probably circle back around on street naming, be my guess. So. I don't think John's completely sold on the promenade. All right. I know I'm not. Okay, Steve, and then Sean.
I heard somebody actually mentioned one of these, uh, pages and event center. And. You know, that's a real opportunity for us to grab, grab this, this space at this time. It's just going to be gone forever. But some sort of venue there for, to act a lot of people for situations and, and then we're going to have sixty, seventy. Residences per acre. That's incredible. And hopefully there's commercial or, or community commercial. That goes with that. And so all that mix is just what we want.
Thank you, Steve. Sean.
Uh, I thought this was great to see and kind of talk through more of the like, how do we get there? One of the things that really jumped out to me, and I know we're going to go through a couple of revisions of this. Was getting clearer on kind of where to start in a way that sort of makes some sort of sense opposed to. Right? Like it, you know, it's a big area and, you know, knowing that, you know, maybe we could get started and with some of the. Post-industrial buildings that are there and kind of work our way and think about the phasing in a relevant way. I think that's really helpful. Like there's a lot of cool information in here.
Yeah, very much so. The, the thing that keeps haunting me. I've been through many iterations of what we plan for our areas. And then I see. Years down the road, what actually happens to those areas? And so it's easy for us to get wrapped up in what our visions are. And I've seen those. Plans where people have some amazing visions and things. And, um, it really boils down to our developers and what they're willing to do and what they're going to do. Um, I look at the architecture, Lori, on the pictures you sent of those examples, uh, buildings, which to me, I, I, I. I don't like those kind in, in that sense. And, you know, it's, it's, I think. Springfield needs to separate itself from Eugene. But. That being said, it's still going to be the developers. I don't want to, my fear is it's still getting locked in on. Our own visions and not being able to wiggle out of those and allow for people to use their own imagination. There, it's their dollars. And to, um, and frankly, we get so locked in, we're going to. Push people out, not allow for that development. And, and that's what I don't want to see. I want to see. I want to see shovels in the ground for something that, that the produce, the, the. Developers are willing to do. So I think we need to make sure that we are. Very, uh, ears to the railroad tracks in regards to listening to those developers. And listening to their planners as opposed to what we're planning for them because. That rarely what, I've never seen it really work that all that well. So.
And Councilor Pishan, you just said.
Yes.
We have our development team for the city property engaged in this process already, which I think is just a. Uh, to your point, we want to make sure that it, we're building something that's effective and feasible. Um, and their input now is very important.
Yeah, absolutely. The developer's got to be able to make a pencil out or they're not going to do it. So. Awesome. I, I, very, very great presentation. It's. Gives me a little more energy and, and more excitement for Glenwood area. Thank you for all your hard work, uh, Ally and, and crew. Is there any more questions from our directors? Excellent. Uh, Ally, what's after this?
I think that's everything, but I'll leave that up to Neil who runs.
Oh, no other items. Yes. Okay, just making sure if she, if she had something, I've been, I was gonna attack you. So no other items. So with that being said, I'm gonna do the old, hey, we're adjourned. Have a great evening.